Okay, everybody, we might as well get started. I've got, you know, that one says five after seven, that one says quarter of seven, so I'm thinking it's about seven o'clock.
Seven oh three.
Sorry. My name is Ruth Curley. I'm the project manager for DEC, for the Altech specialty steel site. This is my boss, Mike Nemirovsky. He works for DEC also. Can you put ahead? I've been with DEC for 12 years. This is my second public presentation, so you're either gonna see my worst public presentation, or my best public presentation. With me today is Stephen Berniger. He's the Health Department Project Manager for the site. And this nice lady up here is Jean Firth. She works for one of our consultants, Mac Tech. She came all the way out here from Portland, Maine, today to help me out with this meeting. Jean's been working on the site for seven years, which is longer than Steve and I. We just acquired the site through promotions and retirements of the past project managers. We've got a brief agenda. We're gonna try to wrap the meeting up. We need to be out of here by 8:30. We wanna try to wrap up the meeting before then. As a reminder, the documents related to our site are available in the Waterbury Public Library next door. They're all electronic. And they're also available at the DEC and Central Office. If you wanna call me and make an appointment, we can give you access to documents in our office. The proposed remedy that we're gonna talk about today is available on the public website. That fact sheet that was, is available up here, it's also available electronically on our DEC website. So tonight, I wanna talk a little bit about the New York State Superfund program. I wanna summarize the investigation that's taken place at the site. We're gonna talk about some remedial options that were evaluated with Jean's help for parts of the site, and then we're gonna answer any questions you may have about the proposed So, Altech is a state superfund site, and what that means is, at this point in the process, the state is funding all of the remediation, the investigation, and the actions that are gonna be taking place. The way the superfund works is, once the site is identified, we conduct a remedial investigation. That's going out in the field and taking water samples, and soil samples, and sediment samples, comparing them to standards. Once we've addressed the entire, the entire site, we look at alternatives to address the contamination. And those alternatives are what's called a feasibility study. We've done the feasibility study, we've written a proposed remedial action plan, and that's what's being presented here tonight. This is a public comment period, this is a public meeting. I'm sorry, there's somebody over here at one of the doors, so... We're having a public meeting tonight. There's a 30-day public comment period. If anybody requests an extension to the comment period, it can be extended. Based on the comments, the DEC may modify the proposed remedy. Eventually, when we're, when we've addressed the comments, considered any input you guys have had, we'll issue a record of decision that finalizes the remedy, and then the remedy will be implemented. So probably everybody in here knows where the site is, but in case you don't, we're up here in the city of Waterbury, at the library. The site is actually in the town colony. It borders the Village of Nanans way down on the southern end. There's, the site's about 99 acres. There's 31 acres on the north side of Spring Street. That's the former Altech landfill. You may have heard about it at a public meeting last year with my friend and colleague, Ian. The southern part of the site is 68 acres, and that's the main manufacturing area with all the buildings and some of the property beyond that that backs up to the cemetery. So how is the site divided? We break the site up into operable units, and each of the operable units has characteristics that are similar and contaminants that are similar. And each of the operable units is kind of addressed separately, just based on what makes sense to us. So, at this site, we have four operable units onsite, and then we just recently come up with a fifth operable unit, which is the Chroma Kill, which is downstream of the main plant area. OU1 is the main manufacturing building, and soils around it, and the soils around the landfill proper. OU2 is the closed landfill, it's in green on this map, and the roadways that kinda lead to and from it. If you wanna come in, you wanna sign in, please? The Chroma Kill is this water body, it's a nice creek that runs kind of along the edge of the property through this gorge, and then crosses under Spring Street here, runs through the main plant area, and then goes under Lincoln Ave., and then it goes under that field that you see next to the fire department. It's enclosed in a pipe through that area, and then it pops out, I think, over behind the FedEx building. So we're gonna talk about the Chroma Kill between where enters the pipe just on the other side of Lincoln Ave., and where it comes out of the site up here by Spring Street. So the site history, everybody, I think, in the room knows a little bit about Altech Steel. The site began operation in about 1909. It was a huge industry in the area, made a lot of different steel, steels for use in different applications across the capital district. When it got to be the 80s and 90s, were some ownership changes, some kinda hard times, I think, for the steel industry everywhere. The company went bankrupt in 1999, and the operations, I think there were some other company that came in in 1999 and ran it in some limited capacity for a few years, but operations ceased in 2002. So what does DEC care about? So DEC started doing site investigations with the original Altech company back in the 1990s. Altech put in some groundwater monitoring wells, I think they did some soil sampling. It's a long process to investigate one of these sites, as you may well imagine. More recently, we have, the state was kind of instrumental in removing some of the PCB transformers after the operations stopped at the facility. We went into the buildings and cleaned out a lot of the chemicals that had been left behind, and the laboratories, and the medical clinic, you know, kinda little, you know, cabinets full of chemicals that you'd find. There was an area on the site known as the South Lagoon, that's kind of at the south end of the property alongside the railroad tracks. Not sure that it was really a lagoon, it was kind of a, kind of a ponded area. We dug out some material that was in there that contained PCBs and sent that offsite. Jean was part of all these things I'm talking about. In 2015, we went back into the buildings again, and in the manufacturing buildings, there are these, these kind of pits and vaults that had machinery in them, or were part of the manufacturing process. Some of those had sludges and oils. They were kinda, they were all contained in there, but we, they needed to come out. So, all those kinds of things were removed in 2015. Jean's, Jean's firm's written a lot of reports, there's a report on each of these activities down in my office. There's a oil-water separator, that's three concrete bays that are right at the front of the site, they were part of, I believe they were part of the wastewater treatment for the site. They were full of, again, sludges and kinda, they had some stuff that all got suctioned out, cleaned up, shipped offsite for disposal, just recently, within the past year or so. On top of doing all these remedial measures, we've been continuing to investigate the site. We wrapped that up in 2016. We looked at alternatives for the contamination that we found in 2017, and now we're going through the process of doing these remedy proposals. So last year, February, I mentioned my colleague, Ian Bilby. He had a presentation in this room regarding the landfill and the building. Did anybody go to that presentation, besides my boss and my Health Department guy? Couple of them. We're not gonna talk about that again, other than to say, the landfill's continuing to be monitored, and there's a process where we're going through the initial phases of starting to look at how the buildings are gonna come down. Today, we're gonna talk about what's left on the site, which is the 68 acres on the south part of the main plant area, and the creek, the Chroma Kill, which is on the main plant area. When we do our investigations, we investigate soil, groundwater, sediment, sometimes we investigate areas of the buildings, but we don't have that concern at the site. Surface water, we looked at surface water at the site. I'm gonna give you a little bit of a summary of what we found and where we found. So for soil contamination, we sampled the entire 68 acres, and we sam, when we do our soil sampling, we sample at three depths. We sample at the surface, we sample in just below the surface, the shallow subsurface is what I call it, and subsurface, which is greater than two feet. So you've got the top, like, three inches, you've got maybe from three inches to 24 inches, and then you've got greater than 24 inches. And what did we find? At this site, we found metals, which wasn't a surprise to anybody, but we found metals and PCBs. The metals that we found are the metals that you'd expect to find at a steel plant, I think. Chromium and nickel are the two big ones. Down along the Chroma Kill, there's an area of the site where we found a bunch of lead. And we're not quite sure why the lead's there, but it's, it's in the subsurface, it's greater than two feet deep, it's like from two to five feet deep, and it's in a kind of a very narrow band right along the creek. That'll turn up later in a different slide. But the main contaminants on the site, in the soil, are chromium, nickel, there's some PCBs, and there's lead. Now, the PCBs are, we'll see the PCBs on the next slide. So I mentioned that we sampled the entire site, and each of these little, you probably can't see them, but each of these little boxes is a place where we took soil samples. And the way they're presented in our report is, there's a little, there's a little tower, and the color of the tower tells you how contaminated the soil is. So the red means that the soil exceeds what we call our industrial soil cleanup objectives. And because the site is somewhat industrial, we compared most of our, we made a comparison, and the worst-case scenario was the industrial soil cleanup objective. So we have red exceeds industrial, orange exceeds commercial, which is a lower standard if there's, the site's gonna be used for commercial purposes. So, the point of the slide is to show you the, the distribution of sampling, and to show you that the grid, you know, the grids are 200 feet by 200 feet, so that kinda gives you an idea of, you know, just how much sampling has been done, has been completed, and why we think we understand the contamination of the site. On the slide, this is the slide for PCBs. So we have a little patch, kind of a big patch, a patch of PCBs and soil out here on the south, on the south end of the site, in what's called the scrap metal storage area. We've got another little block of PCB-contaminated soil right here. And then these other red squares are PCB-contaminated soil, but they kinda correspond to where we had transformers. PCBs are used, have been used in the past in transformers. They're dielectric fluid, the transformers work real well, but they tend to leak, so it isn't too surprising to find the PCBs where the transformers are. The orange on this slide shows PCB concentrations, they exceed 25 parts per million. That's gonna be important because the 25 parts per million is gonna factor into the proposed remedy, when we, when we get to that. I think that's enough for that one. So groundwater, we had to sample groundwater at the site. There's about 80 wells that were installed on the site. There's 70 that are in the shallow part of the soil, and then there are 10 that have been drilled into bedrock. Bedrock's not very deep here, it's like 40 to 50 feet. And above the bedrock, we have a layer of clay, and we have a layer, we have some sand, and then we have, you know, kind of the topsoil. So we've got, we've got about 80 wells on site, we've got contamination in some of them. Chromium is located at the, some of the wells down at the southern end of the site, we've got some PCBs, and some of the groundwater. It's limited to one or two out of these 70 wells. There's petroleum in the shallow groundwater. It's more widespread, and you'll see that in our next slide. And we also have nickel that's found in the deeper bedrock wells. It's important to understand that the groundwater contamination has been there for a long time. We've been monitoring it, we monitor it, we go out and measure like every 15 months for the main plant site. And we've been doing that for 10 years, about?
More than 2006.
2006, so. And we haven't, we haven't seen any of the groundwater migrate offsite. So, we're pretty confident the groundwater, although it's contaminated, is staying on site, and it's not getting any worse, it's, it's just there. So, we have wells that are offsite that we monitor for groundwater movement, groundwater contaminants, same groundwater contaminants, and we haven't seen anything. Like, these are down, these wells down here are offsite, and they're downgrading, and we don't see any of the contaminants that are limited to this well, this well, there's a couple more in here for the PCBs and the chrome. So we don't see them migrating offsite. The petroleum is more up in this area, and we don't see it migrating either. But the petroleum, what we're doing is, we, we, we have a vendor that comes in and bales it out, like manually, takes it out of the well every couple of months, and they dispose, and they dispose of it offsite. So we've been, we've been monitoring how much petroleum we have in a few wells over here since about 2007, and there's about half a dozen of them that routinely end up with petroleum floating on the top that the guys have to manually bail out every couple of months. Do you wanna add anything?
There's lots I could add, but no.
Here's our petroleum plumes. As you can see, it's kind of more widespread up here. We get some, there used to be a fuel oil tank up on top of the hill here, and we think that the plumes may be related to some leaks in the pipes that distributed it to some of the buildings. So we have, you know, there's a spot here, a spot here, a little bit here. There's a bigger region down in the rolling mill area, and this is where we get, like, maybe, I'm gonna say like three inches of product in these wells every couple of months. It doesn't, it doesn't seem to get down here, it's just kinda staying where it is. That's, that's our experience, anyway. So I wanna talk about the Chroma Kill. That's the creek that crosses Spring Street is over here, Lincoln Ave. is down here, and this, this kinda sneaky looking thing is the Chroma Kill. So we, we've taken sediment samples along the length of the Chroma Kill here, all the way to offsite, and what we found is that sediments are classified in three categories: highly contaminated, moderately contaminated, and low risk to aquatic life is the, kind of the lowest threshold. They all exceed that low risk to aquatic life. A lot of them exceed the highly contaminated criteria. The exclusives are for metals, again, chromium, nickel, there's some copper in here, there's a little bit of lead, there's maybe one PCB. But all the sediments from up here, up by the retention pond, just by the office building, all the way through the site, and then going offsite and down to, this is the guardhouse. So, across the street from the guardhouse to where it kinda ducks under the railroad tracks here, all those sediments are contaminated, and all those sediments, we will be proposing to remove. The other thing I wanted to show you on the slide is this kind of square area that's black. This represents, remember I was talking about the lead in the soil down by the Chroma Kill? So, this is the area where we found lead in soil, like, two to five feet deep, down along here at the Chroma Kill. And what we think that is, is we think that somehow, when they were building the site, they went in and they, they, they got some soil from somewhere offsite, and they put it in here, so they have enough room to make a road. And maybe they got it from the railroad, maybe they got it, we don't know where they got it. But it's, it's different from all the other material that we see everywhere else on the site. So, we've limited the, the extent of, the lead-contaminated soil is limited just to this, and it's about, I guess it's about 400 feet, because each of these squares is So that's all I really wanna say about the Chroma Kill. At this point, we're gonna have Mr. Berniger talk a little bit about the Health Department's role in helping us out with our...
Thanks, Ruth.
You want my cord?
No, not really. If you can just follow along with me as I speak, okay. We're gonna take a break here in Ruth's presentation and talk about exposure. Anybody live nearby this site? Do you have our brochure on exposure? Okay, great. Anybody else? Anybody else want my brochure?
When you say nearby, how close do you mean?
Within, uh, feet.
No.
How, how close are you, sir?
The other side of, um...
D and H.
They are. They're probably two hundred.
Okay. Anybody else? Anyway, these are gonna be up here. Yeah, my name's Stephen Berniger, and I work for the Department of Health, State Department of Health here in Albany. And Ruth and I work on these, on these sites all the time. The whole, the department has roughly 2,000 sites across the state that we work on. I handle the, the Health Department aspects, and Ruth handles the cleanup part. There are two things that Ruth and I like to work on here in all the sites. Number one is, wanna make sure that the contamination doesn't spread offsite, and number two, wanna make sure that when we're cleaning up, that the public doesn't get exposed to the contamination. That's where I come in. There are three ways that a person can come in contact with a chemical, and, and these are all, we talked about these chemicals here. One of them is inhalation, or breathing it in. Another way is skin contact, you get it on your skin somehow. You get it on your skin somehow, and it gets absorbed into your body. And the third way is ingestion, or swallowing it. So you're not going to be exposed unless you have one of those three ways that chemicals can enter your body. So keep that in mind when we're talking about these chemicals. These three ways are called exposure pathways. They're also, if you're reading through the environmental sheet, the exposure sheet, you'll see it's called roots of exposure. Okay? Okay. So that's what we're worried about. We're worried about the public. We're worried about the public being exposed. So there's three ways you could be exposed is through exposure pathways. Let me give you an example. This morning I got up, I shaved, and I slapped on some aftershave lotion, something that happens every day. So my question to you is, is the aftershave lotion a chemical? I see you shaking your heads, yes, it is. There's at least alcohol in it. My next question is, what is the exposure pathways that I've been exposed to? Well, let's think, there's three of them. How about direct contact? Yeah, I did this. How about inhalation? Yeah, smells nice. I did smell it this morning. So I've been exposed, I've had two exposure pathways already. How about swallowing or ingestion? I don't think so, unless I did this. So these are, this is an easy example to remember. Remember that unless you're exposed by these exposure pathways, there's really not going to be a problem. And if you are exposed by any of these pathways, it's not, doesn't mean that you're going to get sick. We get exposed to chemicals every day of our life, and as long as we, in my case, the aftershave, as long as I use it as directed, it's going to be, it's going to be okay for me. So let's apply those three exposure pathways to Ruth's site. Let's take direct contact. In this case, when we're working on this site for the remedy, I don't think the public is going to be allowed on that property. So chances are, you're not going to get that, those chemicals on your skin, or you're not going to touch them. How about inhalation? Yeah, that could be a problem. There could be dust coming from this site. It's going to be a construction site. So what do we do to try to keep the dust to a minimum? We have what we call dust monitoring stations. Whenever we're doing work on the site, there'll be two monitoring stations put near the work area. One will be upwind, and one will be downwind. Now, these monitoring stations sniff the air constantly, and they spit out a report every fifteen minutes. And that report tells the reader of the report what the dust concentration is. Sometimes you can see it, sometimes you can't. So the project manager of the site will set that dust monitoring station at a certain level, and that will send out an alarm when it reaches that level. And that will tell the project manager, I've got a dust problem, there could be contamination in the dust, we've got to do something. Usually what they do is, what do you think? They wet it down. They get out a great big hose, and they wet it down. Some sites have sprinkler, sprinkler heads that go off. And that usually mitigates the dust problem for that particular day. Now, if it's raining out, of course, it's already wet, so it's probably, you're probably not going to see any dust. But that keeps the public from having dust come onto their property, and having the public get in contact with the dust. All right, there's one more that I have to talk about: ingestion. Do we have to worry about ingestion here? Well, I don't, I don't think you're going to be swallowing, you're not going to be on the site, first of all. You're going to be off-site. So Ruth and I did not think that there was going to be a problem with the third exposure pathway, swallowing or ingestion. So basically, that's what I wanted to talk about tonight: exposure. Are there any questions? Leave them to the end, and Ruth is going to have a question and answer period at that point. I think that's it. Thanks very much.
So I think to wrap up what Steve was saying, the potential exposure pathways for the site are possible direct contact with soil if it gets tracked off-site. We have ways to prevent that from happening during construction. Groundwater's not used as a drinking water source in the area, so we're not concerned that, and groundwater's not migrating off-site, which we talked about. So that's not a potential pathway. And the only other pathway would be, like, direct contact, possibly with soils that come off the property, off of a construction vehicle. I think Steve may not have mentioned that when we do excavations at construction sites that are in our program, we require that the trucks be washed before they, before they leave the site to prevent them from tracking dust and dirt out into the street. So we've talked about there's soil contamination. We talked about that there's groundwater contamination. We talked about that there's sediment contamination in the chroma kill. OU-1 is the main plant, soils and groundwater on the main plant area. And after we got our investigation finished, we asked Jeets Company to come up with some possible ways to deal with the soils and groundwater at the site. They gave us five options. We have to include a no-action option that leaves the site in the condition that it's in. We have to include, based on our program requirements, we have to include a cost estimate to remove all the contamination from site and make it pristine and pure, like the buildings were never there, and like the contamination never existed. So we have an alternative that talks about excavating all fill and all contaminated soil from the site, which would be a lot, three hundred and twenty thousand cubic yards. For comparison, a dump truck handles about twenty cubic yards at a time, twenty to thirty. So this is a whole lot of, way more excavation than is probably going to happen, but it's in our feasibility study just as a comparison tool. There are three other options for the OU-1 that we're considering. All of them include placing a site cover over the soil contamination that's on the surface, where there's not a big concentrated chunk of it, like we saw in the picture. We call that a site cover system. It prevents, it prevents contact with the soil. What ends up happening is we write a site management plan for future use of the site. Then if somebody is on-site, they need to excavate, you know, a portion of the site, they know that the soil's contaminated, they can address it a bit. All of our remedies have groundwater monitoring. Groundwater isn't leaving site. It's been stable for twelve years, I think Jeets said. We're going to propose groundwater monitoring over the long term for all of our remedies. Place where the remedies differ is in the removal of those red and orange squares that we saw in the soil picture. So the main issue is the PCBs that are in the soil. We can remove PCBs that are higher than fifty parts per million. EPA's limit for PCB-contaminated soil is fifty parts per million. So that one option we looked at, that's one option we looked at for soil. New York State has a limit for PCBs in soil that's twenty-five parts per million. That's the other option we looked at. That was the red and the orange squares on my soil contamination diagram. And this six thousand yards includes the fifteen hundred up here. So you have fifteen hundred yards of bad stuff, and you have, the difference here is forty-five hundred. You have forty-five hundred yards that are between twenty-five and fifty. So those were the two options we considered for soil. And the third option was the more conservative New York State number for removing PCBs above twenty-five parts per million, and doing some sort of treatment to the groundwater. We thought we could possibly suck out the groundwater. Petroleum will come off if you run, you know, you kind of run it through an airstripper and treat it with chemicals. We had Jeets, Jeets Company prepared an estimate to do that. When we were talking about the chroma kill, the creek, again, there were a couple of different options evaluated. No action, which we don't want to do, that leaves the sediments in the creek, leaves them, you know, there for all time. We could remove the sediments of the lead-contaminated soil, treat it to address the metals, and dispose of it on-site, or we can remove the sediments of the lead-contaminated soil, treat it, and dispose of it off-site. So those are the two options that are being considered for OU-4. How do we evaluate these alternatives? Evaluating the remedial options is kind of, it's a thorough process. There are two, there are two criteria that all the remedial options have to meet. Those are our threshold criteria. Each of the remedies has to be protective of human health and the environment. They have to be protective for all the media where we found contamination, which could be soil, groundwater, sediment, sometimes surface water, but not in this case. And the remedies have to comply with our applicable standards. So each of the remedies we talk about have to meet those criteria. How do we pick one? Well, we have balancing criteria. We look at short-term impacts, we look at long-term effectiveness, we look at how the reduction of the contaminants is treated. We look at whether the technology is implementable and easy. We look at if it's... An example of that might be, we're talking about treating the groundwater. We might have to spend, you know, a million dollars to do studies to find out how fast you can pull the groundwater out of the soil. How much chemical do you need to treat it with? How long does that take? What do we do with it when we're done with? Those are the kinds of things that we look at when we're looking at our balancing criteria. And we also look at cost, or the cost for each of the remedies. It's a consideration. I won't lie, it's a consideration. Modifying criteria are things like community acceptance, community comments, and land use. Whatever remedy we pick needs to comply with land use for the parcel that we're dealing with. In this case, it's industrial, but in some cases, like when we have a, like a small site within a town or village, there might be somebody that, we might say we want to clean it up to an industrial standard or commercial standard, but there may be houses next door, so the appropriate land use might be residential. So all of our, the alternatives that we evaluate, remedies all have to meet the land use for the site that we're dealing with. In this case, it would be industrial. So I talked about we had kind of five alternatives proposed. The first one was no action. The second one was clean everything up and make it nice and pristine, like Altech was never there. We estimated the cost of that to be ninety-eight million dollars, in case anybody wants to The other options here were disposing of our PCBs off-site over fifty parts per million, off-site disposal over twenty-five parts per million. You can't dispose of PCBs on-site, so those are the only two options. Talked about the soil and sediment, excavated and treated and disposed of on-site, treated and disposed of off-site. All of our remedies have soil cover system, which would be probably six inches of crushed stone over the, over the site. Site management and monitoring, which is continuing to look at the groundwater and passive recovery of the petroleum that's sitting on top of it. We have adhesment on the site that prevents, prevents it from being used for non-industrial purposes. It prevents the use of groundwater. It requires compliance with the site management practices. Those are the kinds of things we put in under institutional controls. And then our last option, our last little thing here is groundwater treatment on-site that was included in our alternative five. And you can see the costs as we went along, fifteen, twenty, twenty-four million. So what are we proposing to do at Altech? What we're proposing to do at Altech is excavate the soil with PCBs over twenty-five parts per million, get it off-site, get rid of it. Taking out the soil and the sediments around the chroma kill that contain metals, lead, chromium, and nickel. Treating those and disposing of that material on-site. Putting crushed stone over the site where pavement or building slabs don't exist. That's what we call a site cover system. And obviously, that wouldn't all be done at once. That would be kind of done in phases as the buildings settle down. And we're going to continue to recover the petroleum and groundwater and monitor the site-wide groundwater, as we've been doing since 2006. There's a picture on the next slide. This is our proposed remedy. All the stuff I just said, again, the red is the PCBs greater than fifty, the orange is the PCBs greater than twenty-five. The petroleum in the groundwater is scattered about. The sediment and lead-containing soil along the chroma kill will be excavated and treated That's the remedy we're looking for comments on at this time. Why do we propose this? It's protective of human health and the environment. It meets all of our standards. It meets all of our standards. We felt of the, of the options we had, this was the best in terms of short and long-term effectiveness. Reduces the contaminated volume. We know how to do it. And it conforms with the industrial use of the site. That's about it. That's my presentation. Like to know other questions? Sure there are.
Where on-site would you dispose of the material proposed to be disposed on-site?
We haven't, we don't have a specific area at this time. That would be something that we would do during the, the design phase.
Might it be the landfill?
It would, I don't believe, we'd consider the landfill, but my guess is it would not be the landfill. Because the landfill's already been capped. The landfill's already kind of its own unit. I don't believe that we would expand the boundaries of land to add more soil.
I think that there's going to be some excavation, so those are areas that can be filled initially with this material after it's been treated. And this can be regrading, so to bring the site to an even grade, there'll be areas that need to be. So those are the places we'll start to figure out.
So this would be the chromium, the lead, but not the PCBs?
Correct.
And the nickel?
Right.
Would still be on-site?
Would still be on-site.
But neutralized?
Yes, it would be treated.
How do you neutralize that?
There's several different chemicals, but generally, it's a pH balancing, so that it makes it immobile.
So will the site, if it's upgrading, will it be level with buildings that you're monitoring or that will be brought to the ground?
Most of the buildings are proposed for demolition. That's the OU3.
So that, boy. You know, as I said, so this presentation, O2, O4, or O5?
Correct.
I didn't see a lot of people that have been out there long last February that work for O2 and O3 and do the rest of the downstream stuff, or, so there's no one on those things.
I'm sorry, I-
So O2 and O3, you guys talked about that last February, so what would be, summarize that? What would be the outcome for that? Is there any plan is there, is there anything going out of that? And then the last one was, was you said, well, hey, by the way, there's some downstream stuff on the chroma kill and over across the Broadway, and they're going to stand behind for a little Broadway down to Hudson. So is there any impact on that? I don't know, you know, kind of hear a little about that.
You want to take this mic?
Well, you know-
I wasn't the project manager when we did the O2 and 3 meeting, so we'll let my boss-
Yeah, the overall scope of that, the long-term vision for the site, oh, that makes it a lot easier to do it.
There's a lot of questions there. The landfill, O2, that's been trapped for years in monetary. We prepare if necessary. Unfortunately, it's been damaged by one individual. That's, that's an ongoing project, ongoing maintenance. The O3 buildings that we wrote, wrote a record decision last year, they're hoping about this time last year for that. The plan there is because of the asbestos, cyanine roof material, it's got PCBs, asbestos in it. Because of the caulking of buildings, there's PCB caulking, there's asbestos insulation in a lot of buildings. To deal with that, the only really realistic and safe way to do it is to take these buildings down and remove the material, the buildings, the steel and everything's on the ground. All the brick and everything would be used to fill in, that brings the fact that great, the steel will go off-site. And hazardous materials, the PCBs, the asbestos, that will be bundled and shipped to a secure landfill. That project is in the beginning stages of design. We have a different project manager, an construction project manager that's working with a consultant to come up with a feasible way to do it in a staged manner. Unfortunately, the state of New York has a lot of projects like this. And that, that particular phase of this cleanup is in the queue to get funded. I believe, I could give you a number, what the number was, I forget what the estimated cost was, but it's in the millions.
Is it possible to set you in a?
No, you know, I actually have the document right here, so I can give you the right exact number.
I think it's seven.
Seven, alright. On seven, I mean, that was, that's a, that's a very, that's very conceptual, it's plus or minus, plus or minus 40%. When we get closer, we have to come up with a way to do it, we'll come up with a much more refined engineer's estimate.
Does that come after this, or do we do it?
Well, it has to come before this, because you've got to get these buildings out of the way, then to recreate the site. The only exception is the extrusion building, the big building at the south end. That building was barely built later. It doesn't have the asbestos side in the roofing material. That building is slated to stay there. And I'm thinking there's some town officials here that might be interested that there is, there is interest in that building by actually a number of parties.
To use it in place without repurpose?
Yes, repurpose it, which is a good, good idea, get it back in the, back in the tax laws and create some jobs and progress it. The rest of the buildings are unfortunately in pretty sad shape. A company that was created after the bankruptcy, Altech, called Woodco. They allowed a salvager to come in there about 2005 and pull all the big machinery out of the rolling mill and on some of the other buildings. In the process of doing that, they destabilized a lot of those buildings. They've cut ivy leaves out of the ceilings to get at the cranes. Knocked down brick walls to get in and get the machinery. You don't even want to walk in those things. Frankly, I think this problem with this site is the physical plazas. And as you probably all know, the kids are in there all the time. You can't keep them out. You know, we have the county police, they're patrolling it, they catch kids, we catch them. We give them, you know, stern talking to, but it's graffiti heaven in there. They have marked up all those buildings, it's, so that's the big problem. We are trying to fund that. It's probably going to be a couple of years before we get the, unfortunately, there's a lot of other projects that are in the queue. And as everybody knows, the squeaky, the squeaky wheel is the grease.
The whole thing to play out, best case scenario, it's going to be a decade, more than a decade, 20 years?
Unless some other entity comes in and decides to take it over or and repurpose the whole property, to bring their own finances in and not use our state taxpayers' money. That frankly would be the ideal solution, rather than us offering 400 tax dollars. Whether that happens, we will, we'll need to see. It's a big, pretty contaminated piece of property. It's, they don't want to take it, or some private entity to take it, but there's people out there that are, they have the griddle all to do it. If they make the right deal, then it's possible.
Otherwise, if this were the whole process of funding and budgets and all the things, if you are, this would take, it has to take decades to play out?
I don't, and it's, it's going to take longer than you would like, but less time than you'd fear.
That's not an original walk. He didn't just make that up.
I should say too, the town and county is creating, trying to create a profit opportunity area in Lincoln Avenue corridor. They're going to be coming out with something in the next few months. They do have a steering committee. We're interacting with them to provide them information on some of the things we're doing in the Lincoln Avenue corridor. Because our, our division also works on the former R and I Steel property, the Pasadena Paint property. There's a piece of property called the old Bear Off property up by the landfill. So that's, and that's another opportunity for the public to provide input. What, what vision you see for this whole Lincoln Avenue corridor?
So my last question was on the downstream of the chroma kill?
Chroma kill is something that downstream portion, Fish and Wildlife people evaluated and said, we need to look at it. And we hadn't looked at previously, we had our hands full with just the Altech property. So the next task that Ruth is going to be probably undertaking is doing an investigation from where the chroma kill drops under the railroad tracks, goes under the Strut's property and resurfaces over by the AltFedex property, then comes down, goes over Broadway, and then works its way around the park to get out to the river. It's probably about a mile and a half upstream, you're going to have to look at, see the sediments, what the sediments look like there. That project probably, maybe it'll go later this year, it'll take a year, a year and a half or so to do that investigation.
I had a slide of OU5, but I don't know where it went. There it is. That kind of shows you what they got.
Will these slides be available somewhere online, someplace, or do we have to get the slides from them?
I can get you the slides if, if-
We can probably PDF them and put them on the site website.
We can do that, or we can-
And that website is on your faculty?
See the after, what, so what your email is. Anyway, you were asking about the O5 investigation area, so I kind of thought this was kind of an interesting slide. Didn't find it's way in my presentation, but here's the main plant area. Here's that extrusion building that Mike was just talking about, there's some interest in. This is Lincoln Ave. So you can kind of see where this mapping tool shows kind of a very straight shot underground here. And then it pops out in daylight somewhere down in here. So this is the section of the chroma kill that we're talking about. The Fish and Wildlife people want us to go and do some additional investigation on this part. And then maybe some of the boundary stream on the south side of the, of the site. And we all looked into something on the upstream side of the site. We've got a little bit of data in there, but they wanted, Fish and Wildlife wants some additional data. And there's a big waterfall right here too, which is pretty, so.
Where's that?
Huh?
Where is that?
Well, this is the landfill, this is that, these are those nice houses. Where's what? Just above it, right there.
Is that the Buttermilk Falls?
We kind of call it that, yeah.
Oh, these guys, these guys know something about that waterfall.
Yeah, we know a little bit about it. Hang around there, as a kid, you hang out there and stuff.
Buttermilk Falls. And we used to call it Buttermilk Falls, where we used to go up and enjoy ourselves.
Totally funding the investigation.
It's, it's a pretty steep, there's a pretty steep gorge in this area. I mean, you guys probably all know that, but I was kind of surprised when I went up there, you know, kind of like before the snow fell. Yes, sir?
Could there be any of that pollution in the chroma kill that's down further? It's coming from the O2 landfill? Or, or the other landfill that is right next to the waterfall?
I'm not aware of another landfill right next to the waterfall, but-
There is one. It's on the map.
Oh, this thing?
I think so.
Well, this is the landfill area, which we weren't going to talk about.
No, it's to, it's to the south of the waterfall. There's a little access road into it.
Yeah, that, that's all part of the landfill. It's all, it's green and film material and slag and-
It's a different landfill.
Is it on the slide, sir? Because this is our landfill right here. This is that building you see on the right side of Spring Street. You know, you go past the site, there's that building there. And then off in the back here is the landfill.
You talking about Bear Off property?
I, I don't know the name of what it is, but it's, it's an obvious landfill. It's behind that, that one house on, around there.
I think that's Bear Off property. Yeah, right there. Is that the one you mean, sir?
I, I don't know the name of it.
She was pointing to it.
Well, let me, let me, let's, let's talk a little bit about where we are. So here's the main plant area. And as you start to go up the hill, there's a building, kind of a, kind of a building that sits all by itself.
Yes.
That's part of our site. Nope, that's part of Altech's landfill. That houses a leachate collection system that collects groundwater and leachate from around the capped landfill here. And it comes down in a pipe, it crosses under the road, and goes into this building. And then we sample it and we ship it off-site. There's a house here that somebody lives in. There's some woods, but-
Ruth, this gentleman, he's talking about sort of due north of the leachate building.
Here?
Well, on the south side of the chroma kill though. Due north, in that area that, that other drainage comes into that we talked about, the final defense going into the leachate building.
Oh, up here by the power line?
Yeah, I'll, I'll show you later, but anyway. That, that area, we've walked it, there's a lot of slag, there's, there is film material in there, but there's no, the hazardous landfill is up on the hill. What do you think was in here?
Everything under the sun seems to be in that landfill. The one that I'm talking about, the hazardous waste landfill. And there, and there's a road into it. You must, you could, off Spring Street Road, you can walk into it. And, and it's right adjacent to the waterfall. I mean, some of the old cars have been thrown over the bank toward the waterfall. Anyway, my question really is, could there be contamination from the landfill, from the hazardous waste landfill or this other landfill that I'm talking about in the chroma kill farther up than you, than you have tested?
Well, the O5 chroma kill study, yes, it's going to include going off-site towards Hudson River, but it's also going to include this other section of the chroma kill up to the waterfalls. We want to look at that a little further too.
I think you ought to go up to, to the hazardous waste landfill.
Well, we are, we are, up to the, where the waterfalls are, there's a couple of them. Where the shale out crops and the stream, the drainage just spills over there. You're not talking beyond the waterfalls, are you, upstream?
Well, well, the hazardous waste site is beyond the waterfalls.
No. That's those waste sites right here. The waterfalls are right, right in here. I've walked them.
Okay, I've talked-
Maybe more than one waterfall.
Alright, well, we're going to take a look at that.
We've probably talked for a while, I think we've been there.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just wondering, is that a super fund site? Is that going to be federal government, or shipment and cleanup, which is pretty insane?
It's, it's the state's super fund, yeah. The federal super fund is something different. Those are sites that EPA manages and controls. So it would be, it would be a state-funded project. Wait, let me get the, I'll get to you.
Yep.
Ask this gentleman here.
Hey, I had a couple, two or three questions.
Okay.
Dirty things. I saw that your standard soil cover is pretty much the entire site. Does that mean there's several presidential banners across the entire site?
There's levels, there's levels above the industrial standard. They're, they're intermixed, they're all over the, there's a little spot here, there's a little spot here, there's a little spot, you know, here. Instead of trying to address it, you know, kind of like a patchwork quilt of soil cover, we thought that it would be, it would make more sense to do a single soil cover over the entire thing.
Okay, how thick is that cover going to be?
Well, it's- Well, it's going to be equivalent to 12 inches of soil. So when we use crushed stone, we don't use 12 inches of crushed stone, probably more like four to six inches of crushed stone.
Okay. Then about the groundwater? You said the primary concern is handle.
Yep.
What about the salt and contaminants under VOCs, or are those present above the groundwater standards? I hope, I'm just going to be an dirty question.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
Do you have VOCs which have standards, aren't you?
We don't, yeah, we didn't have any VOC, we didn't find any VOCs.
Okay, so...
We have one, I think one bottle that has levels of fluoridated supplements, but we're not seeing, then seeing xylans that are associated with gasoline.
They're all...
This is a diesel or number two, pure problem.
Turn on even.
Right, and then the semi-bottle compounds, again, the ones that have standards are not above the standards.
There are some, there are some trichlorobacets in the groundwater. There are some trichlorobacets in the groundwater.
They're standing in the soil, aren't they?
They are. And they're south of the extrusion building, and one of the things that we did over the course of the state's control of site is we did a chlorobacete investigation and removal in this one area where we, where we had found these chlorobacets in soil. And that addressed the problem initially. And I believe the groundwater levels are still elevated, but they're not as elevated as they were when we dug out that contaminated soil. Mr....
Yeah, I've got a question for you. The EPA cleanup plan for the PCBs, is it being done under a SIMP? Is it performance-based?
When we get around to digging, when we get around to implementing the remedy, we'll have to follow the federal PCB TOS rules. And my recollection is that if we went to 25, we could do a self-implomatic plan, but I'm a little fuzzy on whether we need to notify, or whether they, or whether they actually comment on it, or whether it's just a notification. Make eye contact with these gentlemen in the back.
If the consolidation of the state-wise material on site, is that going to limit like the future use of the site, like future use of like construction, construction of new buildings or things like that, other than what's going to be in the site management plan?
Do you want to take this? Go ahead. The concentrations will be still elevated, but they'll be immobilized, so there really shouldn't be any additional things you need to do for those soils as opposed to any of the other soils on site.
And that material is going to be consolidated into one area of the property, and that'll be surveyed, and we'll know where it is, and maybe that one little area won't be used, but it'll be consolidated.
We have a meeting with you.
I've been interested in this site for a long time, but after the site is remediated, it's going to be remediated to industrial use.
That's correct.
Now, would that, for example, cover a solar farm?
That would be, you know, that's a zoning question. I can't really...
Well, the solar facilities have to be attached to the ground, so they may have to dig into the ground and for it to connect it with the ground. So would that, would that be possible?
My boss is nodding yes.
And first of all, that's a zoning issue. Now, that's one of the issues. But the solar, everybody, you have to remember, it's not just putting solar panels up, it's getting the power out to a distribution center. You have to have one that can handle it, and Community Solar is working on these things all over the place, but every time somebody goes to do one, they're overwhelming the distribution centers. And so it's happened, people are trying to put big solar farms in, end up being small solar farms. So you really have to find someplace to go with the solar. So you may not have the capacity around here to get it out. Everybody doesn't give that any thought.
There's plenty of residential use around this area.
Yep, that's fine. When you're talking commercial use, that's a whole different thing. You know, gigantic solar farms, you might see them out.
No, I don't mean gigantic one. I mean the new ones that are being proposed by the state, which are much smaller and are not huge things like you see out west.
You're seeing issues like along, like interstate's, they're starting to do them, but there's still an issue with capacity getting to a distribution point and then to a place where they can actually move it on to the next location. And we just did a big thing at the Hudson Valley two weeks ago, and it's, back to the point, it's a zoning issue, number one, and number two is getting from point A to point B. That is really difficult. Nobody wants to cut trees now. Nobody wants power lines coming into the conduit under their properties. So there's a lot of issues going on.
But the question was whether the remediation plan would foretalk, assuming you could solve the zoning problem, and assuming that you could hook up to residential, and there would be enough support, would the...
We can give us that later in the discussion. No, physically installing those units would be possible under this cleanup. This cleanup is going to offer either commercial or industrial use of a property. Again, there's zoning issues. I should mention this gentleman that's speaking back here is a Towne County board member. I'm sorry, sir, I don't remember.
Paul Rizano.
Paul Rizano from Towne County. So thank you for your input. But whether, you know, it's feasible, there's a lot of hoops to jump through, but from just a practical, you know, whether you could physically put it up.
There are also incentives to solve the technical problems there.
There is, yeah, and there's incentives. We have plans for walking this... The site management plan will have a soil excavation plan, a health and safety plan, and, you know, all those issues will be addressed to using the property going forward by some entity.
I mean, for example, just to complete what I was going to say, if an industrial site is being considered for part of the use, then they usually require a lot of energy. And perhaps the ability to have a solar farm right next door would be an incentive for that.
Hey, unfortunately, the DEC's not in the business of redeveloping property. We're just in the business of cleaning them up, hoping then somebody will redevelop them.
No, but you don't want to clean it up and have it unavailable for years.
Correct, yes, and we're trying to design a remedy to accommodate the future use.
Who is the property owner?
The property owner, I've been telling people earlier, but when Altex, Special Steel went bankrupt in late 1990s, we went through a bankruptcy procedure. There was lots of other parties involved. They all paid into this environmental trust fund, and this company, it created this entity called Realco that whose responsibility was to manage the environmental trust fund that was created from these various companies that had to contribute to it, plus any assets that were sold from these properties within the trust fund. And Realco's job was to manage those monies and do the cleanups. And that's how they used that money to close the landfill. They took the baghouse down, that was a few million dollars. There's actually a second facility that Altex, especially still had out in Dunkirk, New York, similar size and similar problems, that trust fund was actually used out there, too. Realco, unfortunately, is just a, it's a shell company. It's not, there's no, actually, there's no assets left because the properties are, the cleanups are a lot more expensive than the property value. The sole officer of Realco was a gentleman named Gene Park. He was the president of, I think, Altex, Special Steel was in a bankrupt. He agreed to be the president of Realco. He's in his late 70s, he's recently resigned. The last thing he did for us was he signed off, the state put an environmental easement on the entire Altex landfill and lead property, and he signed off on that as the officer for Realco. Realco, since still exists as a corporation, part of the state, how you do business with them, if they don't have any officers, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer. So they probably, they haven't paid taxes in decades, so, you know, Albany County could take it for taxes.
One more? Yep.
Quick question on your remediation plans on the moderate, not only, you know, for the two units we're looking at site, but the entire site. You know, when you remove the buildings, obviously they're contaminated and they've got some issues except for the one on the southern side of the site, will the foundations remain in place, are they coming out as well? Because they may be a potential limit to, you know, redevelopment scenarios down the road as the site potentially looks for redevelopment opportunities.
You know, I don't think we have a, we don't, in my mind, I think that the foundations stay, but I don't think that that's really been decided yet. He might have a different spin on that.
Again, the DEC's job is to make the property protective, and what our partners and health departments work. Our job is not to redevelop the property. If the foundations are attacked, they're serving as a barrier to the contamination, and as Steve discussed earlier, the direct contact pathway. So the foundations, if they're in good shape, they're going to stay. And if some future entity wants to redevelop the property, they can deal with them through the site management plan, the soil management plan, and if they want to handle it directly, fine, they can take the foundations out then and do what they need to do.
In a case like that, who takes lead on that? If somebody comes in and takes over the site, an industrial type thing, does it become the regional DEC, or does it still stay with the downtown DEC?
Well, there, any entity that comes in would have to sign a consent order with the DEC, what they want to do and what they're willing to do towards the cleanup. Frankly, they're also going to have to deal with Albany County, and they're going to have to go through Towne County.
And all those are fine, but what, who's going to be the lead agency with DEC?
Depends what permits they need. They need permits. The remediation can be done through consent order. Our legislation, our statute allows a permit equivalency process. It's right in our regulations, 1275. Any cleanup they do will be done through, well, through the project manager. Not to say the project wouldn't be, if Ruth retires, somebody else might get it.
I was going to say, I'll leave this, we have an...
But would you go, would you go with the permit process?
Not enough time, not enough time.
Would you go with the permit process? Any future development that may require water permits or care permits or missions, because that gets involved with reaching for our permits bill.
We have a couple more questions, but before we get to them, if anybody wants to leave, I won't, my feelings won't be hurt. Be sure you signed, be sure when you leave, if you haven't signed in, you know, let us know you were here. And I just want to remind everybody, the comment period at this time is going to end on Groundhog Day, okay? So we'd be happy, we have the room for two more minutes. I'll take some more questions, but if you guys want to go, I think you just go out. Let me get her, okay?
The three wells that you have off-site, that you're continuing to monitor, so they come up with something, what happens if this is all been done, I don't remember the timeline of this is, but, you know, you're monitoring for a reason, a potential problem. So what happens then if that happens? And are you just going to keep it to the three at this point? Because it looked like they were all on this side, and is there a reason why you're not moving over here?
Well, do you want to...
There are more off-site wells that just the property boundary is fairly close where those are off-site, just off a blink and out, on the other side.
The ones you showed, there's more than you showed.
There's more that represent off-site there that are clean at this point. So we have both sides of it bounded by creamed wells, showing that.
Yeah, that's very good.
Yeah, and the green areas. So that monitoring, those monitoring points are there. If in site management you find conditions are changing, that makes you do additional steps to go back and look at why they're changing. Has site conditions changed? Is something happening on site? And those, there are steps in place that would take the property owner or consultant through how to figure out what's going on, and then fix that and remediate that at that point.
Where does that creek just end up?
Which creek?
The creek with the chromium and the lead, and it goes through the pipes and it comes down. So where does it disperse? Does it go just in ground, or what? Because it looks like it ends at the apartment complex. So does it dump out there?
No, it goes through the wetland, there's like a wetland in there, and then, you know, that eventually leads to the Hudson River. That's where you're talking about the O-5.
My concern is that there's children in those apartments, and I'm sure they play in that wetland, okay? And if it dumps there with the chromium and the lead and whatever else flows down through on an overflow, then it goes into there and it spreads out there. So you may want to do testing in that swatland.
I think, I think that our Fish and Wildlife people would agree with you, and I think this is only, it's very recent that they've come to us and said, "Hey, you need to keep going farther downstream than what you've already done." Because I think that maybe in the past, we looked at the pipe that goes under the, under the, you know, there's a long pipe there, and I think there was maybe a thought that says, you know, it's kind of a corrugated pipe, there's probably, any of the sediments are probably coming out before they go through that, you know, 500-foot long pipe and come out at the other end. But we'll find out when we start our investigation of O-5.
Usually when there's a good rain...
Yep.
And manans right by those apartments, it overflows.
Oh, does it? Okay.
If I'm correct?
And there's a...
Mubbles out there, and it goes all over them, so...
Out at the end of that pipe?
Yes, and then whatever goes under the road and then empties out wherever, it empties out, too.
Blood's over Broadway.
Yeah.
Driven through it. And I thought they corrected that, but they didn't. But they prepared piping there on the Broadway.
There were some guys out working there a couple weeks ago, right at that bridge. I don't know what they're doing.
Well, my concern would be down by the apartment house where the kids explore the swats.
Like we all did when we were kids, right? Okay. One more.
On the dunker, and the leachate used to go down to that building, this is a hard rock, is there still leachate coming down into the tanks?
At the moment, there is. We're actually got a contractor in action this morning looking at that. Frankly, the leachate, it's mostly rainwater infiltrating down into the collection pipes and then draining down and filling up the tanks inside those buildings. It's not bringing contamination into the tanks, and the water is, you know, it's very uncontamined. Frankly, we're paying to have basically clean water disposed of. We take it, we truck it over to this connected POTW, and they take it and charge us to dispose of it. We're trying to do it the right way, but it's, so we're actually thinking about whether redesigning that stormwater collection system to produce a lot less water and, you know, so...
Is that on the topic that we have got?
Well, no, it's buried.
It's not actually penetrated, right? It's just more, is it...
Well, it's getting down into the collection pipes, and Gene's firm has looked at it some , too, and we got another contractor in here looking at it, to how we can, maybe we have to just cut down on the volume because... have to just cut down on the volume, because it's, it's, some years, the water table's down, it doesn't, the tanks don't fill up, and all of a sudden, the tanks are, there's two, about 300,000 gallon tanks in that building, and all of a sudden, you know, they're both, one's full, and then this spill over to the next one, that's where we start emptying them. And it's, we need to reduce that, the volume of the water that's being draining into those tanks.
You, you know, you can't take it down, there's something about to stay there.
Well, we'll see, we'll see.
Yeah, we'll do an evaluation of all of it in, in the next few months.
Yeah, your contract is a...
Yeah, yeah, so that's under, that's going, ongoing right now. We've started that process, so we'll evaluate all the data we have and figure out what the best options are for fixing that.
So that's, that's going to be done before February 2nd?
Uh, no. But that's what we do.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming out, and we'll probably stay around for a little longer if we've got one more.